Call to me in order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, and every human being.
So the Genesis acceptance of the January 3rd, but it's January 6th, 80 minutes. So call me in order. 3186 route 22 restaurant was presented. I mean, we've set the public hearing that will take place in a while here. And then we just ran through project updates on just projects that have been before us in the last two years, but there hasn't been any kind of conclusion in that they've received approvals and they haven't told us they're no longer interested. So we were just discussing where those different projects are. So if there's any further updates, we'll let everyone know. And then the meeting was adjourned. Motion to accept the minutes made by members Sador, second by member Palmer. Discussion, see no discussion, all those in favor of accepting minutes for our meeting from January 6th. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. That motion passes 5-0 with two absences. All right, next will be a public hearing for 3186 route 22. Like I said, like we usually do before we have the public hearing, we have the applicant come up and just see if there's any last minute presentations that need to be made. And then board members can ask any questions, make any comments. The, our consultants, again, same. And then we would open the public hearings.
Good evening. So the, I guess the big issue that happened since our last meeting was that we did receive from the health department an approval, but it's contingent on us filing a speed permit because of the amount of wastewater per day. So where we had thought that because of the lot size, less than an acre, it wasn't required. They told us that because of the wastewater design flow, that it would be required. So we have our engineer working on that.
Okay. This is the response that we have. Your planning board, the following is the response, your submission to this office consisting of secret information for the above project. One, this department, and again, this department being the Dutchess County Department of Health. This department has no objection to the town planning board serving as lead agency for SECRE. Okay, I think we're kind of way past that. Okay, yeah. That was a while ago. Two, detailed plans, specifications must be submitted to this department by the New York State, by a New York State licensed professional review of the onsite sewage treatment systems and water supply facilities, references made to the Dutchess County Sanitary Code, Article 19. And then previously, a plan was approved for onsite water and sewage disposal. The system appears to have been built following the Department of Health approval. And as-built plans submitted to this department on December 17, 2024 seeks a certification of the sewage disposal system. Additional concern is held for the stormwater management system impacting the sewage disposal systems.
So there was a second document which was sent, I guess, eight days later, which I'm not sure this board has also from the health department. And it said that, if I could read it.
You should.
It said that this office has reviewed the documents received at this office on January 21st, 2025, for the above referenced project. The following comment was generated during that review. It must be adequately addressed for the issuance of authorization to operate from this department. No further technical comments have been made. And the one comment is to provide documentation or proof of valid speeds, state pollutant discharge elimination system permit from the New York State DEC. As the project has wastewater design flow of 2,100 gallons per day, authorization to operate will not be issued without such documentation.
Okay.
And that was by John Aldrich.
Okay, you just pause for one second. You have no recollection of receiving this document, right?
I didn't see that.
Right.
Did you see this document, Andrew Berger? Okay, is that the original or a copy?
This, it was emailed to us, so.
Okay, can you give it to our engineer so we can look at it now and then?
Sure, sure, sure.
Give it to the, yeah, just so we could see this.
And because we got it so late, it wasn't forwarded. We were going to, you know, discuss it tonight.
Okay.
It's not CC'd to us at all.
Well, that seems weird, right?
Yeah, it's not CC'd to the town, it's just sent to them directly.
Okay. Oh, we have it now.
Yeah, sure.
They're probably just being lead agency for SECRE, but they're not going to give us any. Figure it out, I guess, okay.
It's a pretty standard letter to think it, based on the flow. Anything over 1,000 gallons requires a speedes permit.
Okay, so just, and I know you just saw it, do you see any potential issues there?
No, it's no different. Speedies is, they're just bringing DEC in.
Right.
So instead of us getting just a health department approval from Dutchess County.
Right.
We're getting a dual, one we're getting approval from.
Because of the amount of.
Dutchess County Health Department will be the administrator of the speedes permit that's going to be reviewed by DEC.
And that's just required because of the amount of?
Because it's over 1,000 gallons.
Okay, alright.
Can you explain though, the first letter we got tonight did have an open issue about the impervious, pervious surface?
Yes, and then somehow either they reviewed it and they've granted a waiver or found it not significant to an issue. This letter says no more technical issues.
So whatever they stated in that letter.
Is superseded.
It's superseded by the.
This, they can't go to DEC for a speedes permit without a technical review being complete. So the way it works is Dutchess County Health Department reviews technically and for the amount of flow. Once the amount of flow is determined through a flow confirmation and technical review, then they'll send them to DEC for the administrative issuance of a speedes permit.
Okay. Okay, here's the letter for anyone who wants to move it over. Let's just go to that piece of, about the pervious pavers.
It was a 122 letter.
22 letter? No, that's what the, no, that's what we. This is my design. So. Bear with me for a moment here. So again, yeah, the concern was that the expansion area is underneath the.
Forest.
Forest pavements.
They looked at it and.
They said.
According to the letter is that there's no more technical concerns, which is their word of approving technically.
Their way of, right, okay. Okay.
They're the approval authorities.
Right, it's not up, that's what, I remember we discussed this at the
We just wanted.
Previous meeting that like, it's not up to us, but.
We were just pointing it out so that it didn't slip through.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so if they don't have a problem, then we have the basis to have a problem, okay.
Correct.
All right, Mr. Fernandez, right? Anything else you wanted to add this evening?
No.
Okay, any members of the planning board, any other comments, questions this time?
Nope.
Andrew Berger, anything further?
No, not at this point.
We'll go to. Plan area.
Block.
Sorry.
That's okay, that's Monday, I know. Okay, so there was something that the county flagged in regards to the dumpster enclosure, did you see that comment?
That it was in the.
This is in your, it is in the ACRF memo and number.
Comment 10 and R. So we were just curious because there wasn't a detail in the plans that showed what the dumpster enclosure would be made out of. And depending on how it's constructed, it might be interpreted to be a structure versus not a structure and then setback supply, so.
So the intent is like the area that's going to have the propane tanks. We're going to have a wooden kind of fence around it to give that same motif and it's going to be open to the sky.
So it's put same detail essentially for that other one, okay.
It may have been a while, but Attorney Polier, can you remind us, like, we've addressed, this has come up before about having dumpster enclosures, like, have we really ever considered it like a structure? I'm just trying to think of like.
We've never considered the dumpster itself.
An apartment, like an apartment area over off of 22 and near the town line in Wendell? They have like maybe a enclosure or something?
It's never been something that the board has considered a structure previously.
I mean, I guess they're technically right.
I mean, if it was being constructed out of cinder block and on a foundation and was more bulky, perhaps we would want to go to the CEO for an interpretation of whether or not he believes it's a structure.
Right, I'm saying it's technically, I mean, it's fixed to the ground, anything is, you know.
You have a dumpster on your. But the fence, the fence isn't clearly exempt, it's not subject to the setback.
Right.
So I think if it's a fence, it's consistent with past applications to not consider it.
So it's a fence with a roof?
If it's a fence with a dumpster, it can be in the setback.
I don't think it's going to have a roof.
So it's just a fence specifically for the dumpster?
Yeah, with gates on the front, obviously, you'll be able to roll them out.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. We, yeah, we've never really considered that as a structure before, okay.
I think it was just because it was a little up in the air.
Yeah.
We were flagging it just to make sure, or the county was flagging it, I should say. So then just to point out some things that the county flagged that they did improve upon was they added a walking path between the existing sidewalk on Route 22 and then the restaurant entrance. And then they're adding conduit for EV parking in the future. So those are two things that they addressed from the county. Comment number 11, the county response letter noted they proposed that the shade trees should be brought up to the sidewalk and not staggered so as to create shade for pedestrians on the sidewalk. So that's not a part of the code, but that is something if the planning board felt like they wanted that, that we could ask the applicant.
So I do have a comment on that. So our, the reasoning why we have it pulled back is for actually two reasons. When you, when you pull out with a vehicle, it's so you're not blocked.
Not blocking the sightline.
Not blocking the view, sightline.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And, and we just felt that bringing it up towards the front would potentially then cause an issue with not being on the property and maintaining it and cutting it back, it just gets strange, so we just.
20 years from now, it's over, it's like over 22 and dumpster hitting.
Five years from now, it's going to be just, you know.
I remember the planning board have any strong feeling about this?
I, I just say with the comment with Mr. Fernandez, the sightline is an issue.
Right, so we want, yeah, so we're saying we're fine with how you have designed it, right?
Yeah, I'm good with where we are.
Yeah, member Palmer, you're saying you're, you're fine with the way it's designed right now?
I'm fine, I can, I can see the issue with the sightline.
Yeah.
You know, you're, you're pulling out onto Route 22 and with vegetation blocking it over time, you know, over time can be a safety issue.
Yeah, I think we're all the same.
Okay, cool, and so then the next comment that the county brought up was, well, the lighting plan does meet our criteria and is, you know, at the right lighting levels at the lot line, that there are some areas that have 20-foot candles in the middle of the parking lot?
The layperson, 20-foot candles is like.
It's like, I don't even, it was saying, the county letter said for reference, like, high security areas, like an ATM should have eight-foot candles, so.
Yeah, 20 you'll see under gas station. Gas station is.
It's basically, they're almost making like daylight.
Yeah, between 20 and 30 is what you see under the canopy of a gas station.
So that was something that they flagged and they had recommendations for color temperature no greater than 3,000 Kelvin, bringing that overall foot candle down.
But again, nothing in our code regarding this, right?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, you want to, so really they're just spending extra money to make it a little brighter on their own property?
Yeah, and then there's the.
So they go beyond the property line.
Correct.
There's a contravention to our rules, so.
And they shield it down so it's dark.
We did, we did, we did add that as well, right, and we did have conversations with the manufacturer of the lights.
So on the property, it'll be very bright, therefore safer? Or is it so bright that it's blinding, or what are we setting like?
It might.
We're not doing surgery, no. But, but I will tell you, I will tell you, because when I saw that comment, I had someone in the office that actually had a light meter and we have these strange little lights over our conference table and I always thought it was very dim because there were no overhead lights in this particular room. And, I mean, it was probably two or three feet away, let's say three feet away, and those lights, which are 2,500 K, produce 30-foot candles. And I was just, I was blown away, I was like, wow, this still seems dark. Now, you're talking about a 16-foot, you know, light that's shining down and you're still going to have that 20-foot candles on the ground. Personally, I think it's, it's the right thing for a restaurant.
So what happens is if you drop it to eight or 10.
Right.
You're going to have to add poles or you're going to.
Right, so you have dark spots then in between the.
So there's a compromise, if you drop these down to a smaller amount, you will have dark spots.
You just have to have more lights potentially.
Or more poles, so cost-wise, it really balances out.
Oh, I see, that makes sense then.
It's, they're not, they're not going to save money by dropping it to eight, they're going to be adding three or four poles.
Right, right, right.
While they're, yeah, while it is dark sky compliant, there's still going to be a glow about it with that level of lighting, to say, like a night glow, you know what I mean? That you wouldn't necessarily see off of a house or one of those properties that's adjacent to it. I think it's going to be in stark contrast to the adjacent.
The gas station right near my head, right?
Yeah, across the street.
In an environmentally sensitive area where like amphibians were breeding or there were sensitive animals, you wouldn't want that kind of brightness because it can impact reproduction and their sleep cycles, but this area is.
You're right on 22 with a lot of lights.
Yeah, headlights going by.
And then across the road, there's going to be heavy lights, there's a lot of high lights in that area.
Yeah, and that's something that we flagged, I mean, like I said, it meets the code.
Right.
So it's up to the planning board and either way.
Yeah, so there's like, there's a gas station here.
Kind of diagonal. Four brothers.
This is the, this is the project set here.
Right, right.
So it's a gas station here.
Right, there's a gas station here, there's a gas station there.
Well, that's four brothers there.
Oh, that's four brothers, right, there's a gas station here and there's a gas station here.
Further down.
Right.
And then homes behind it.
Homes behind the.
Behind on this side and, and across the way.
There's fencing.
Just to point out, yep.
So again, it's, the foot candles are at the property line, are not above the standard.
Correct, they meet the code.
What you're saying is that they're potentially just, if you looked in that direction, you would see.
Something where now you might not see anything at night?
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, you still would see, you would still see the eight-foot candles, but it would be less, less than the 20. You're not going to do away with it by going down to eight, you're just going to diminish it somehow.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, keep going.
Members of the planning board, any, if you want to discuss this any further?
No comment.
We're good, okay.
Okay, then, that is all of planning's concerns. Anything that was left is taken care of now.
Okay. Thank you. Attorney Polier?
So we have a resolution prepared tonight, if after the public hearing, you're ready to move forward, to go through part two of the EAF and determine, make a determination of significance. The prior discussion, last time the application was reviewed, is that it was incomplete until Department of Health was met because of the issue with the surfaces. We did receive new information tonight, so.
Okay.
It doesn't sound like a zoning board variance is going to be needed, either for the dumpster or pervious, impervious surface.
Right. Okay. Thank you, members of the planning board, having heard from our consultants, any further comments or questions at this time? Mr. Fernandez, anything further to add before we open this public hearing?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Did anyone sign up?
Okay, so. Yeah, certainly, you can still sign up, then you might hear something and you might want to still speak, so. Took that little table from a bank or something. Yeah, we'll turn something.
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, just give us like 15 seconds for a typical thing and you're all. Okay, so, public hearing, 3186 route 22 restaurant. Motion to open the public hearing, motion made by.
Move.
Member Palmer, seconded by member Williams. Discussion, see no discussion, all those in favor of opening this public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no. Okay, this public hearing is now open. Any members of the public wishing to make a comment, ask a question of this planning board, please come to the point at this time. We have one person on the list, Sean.
Herbert?
Hebert?
Herbert.
Herbert, okay, you have three minutes.
All righty, how you doing? My name is Sean Herbert, lifelong resident, and the reason we're here is because our property butts up right behind the restaurant. And I would say our main concerns for the restaurant going in has to do with our privacy and light pollution. So, you know, that's, there is no fence between our property and the restaurant. But I believe. the restaurant. Um, but I believe there is a plan to put some sort of barrier in. Uh, so we were hoping to sort of get a little bit of an explanation about what that barrier is going to be like. And then also, because, you know, light pollution was on our mind and then it came up specifically with you guys, so, um, I would point out that there's not really lights in that location that high or that bright. I'd say the brightest, closest to it would be down to Kelly's, which is sort of blocked by houses and trees. So, you know, putting a 20-foot light right in our backyard essentially is a little concerning. I'm not saying we're riled up about it or anything like that. But we would just like a little bit, know a little bit more about, uh, those two issues. Well, yeah, I mean, well, yeah, I said the barrier. Um, that's both in terms of visual privacy as well as deterring people from walking through, because it has been a minor issue, uh, during the past, I don't know, 20, 30 years, right? Uh, where people will cut through our property to get to 22. Because that lot was vacant.
Right.
People would walk through. Um, now, obviously, assuming it's not vacant, maybe that would be enough to deter people to walk through, but maybe it would incentivize people to walk through in order to get to the restaurant or to other, uh, things going on on 22. So.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, again, what I'm seeing is that, uh, this would be the property line and then this would be a fence. The height of the fence was six feet?
Six feet.
Okay.
Doesn't look like it goes corner to corner.
It doesn't go corner to corner. Um, now that we're looking at it, there is, uh, this is all existing vegetation, I believe?
Yep.
Yeah. Um, okay, and then, um.
What is the reason it doesn't go corner to corner?
You're asking me? So, the, the trees themselves, and there is another fence there, a chain link fence that I thought was. Not there, no?
No, not running, uh, not running parallel to 22, there is no fence.
Okay.
At least on our property. I think you, the, the restaurant property might extend of like eight to 10 feet to the left, and that is behind our neighbor's property, which I believe there is some sort of fence.
Okay.
Also, maybe there's like a fence behind.
Like a little piece of a corner?
This property or something. Uh, this is, um, is this JLS? Or is this JLS? I mean.
Yeah, the electrician has lots of fences.
Okay. Um, so you're concerned about, um, um, you're concerned about people potentially walking through the property? Okay.
Yeah.
And then also about, uh, the lights?
Yes, and then I'm, I'm assuming there's a parking lot going in the back? Is that? No, no?
I fought against that, getting into any of those homes.
Mr. Fernandez, so, uh, no, no worries. So, uh, there is a, there's parking here and presumably people would, you know, most people would probably pull in this way, so the headlights would be shining in this direction. So, uh, this was discussed, I believe, um, at one point. Uh, that six-foot fence would, um, block the headlights from shining, you know, uh, onto your property.
Okay.
The, the fence is, um, do we have the, which shade would have like a characterization of the fence? Like this, like how it looks?
Detail?
Yeah, the details.
Um, down by landscaping, I believe.
Should be all landscaping.
Just, let me zoom out so we can, uh.
But I believe it's wood. There's no, um, it's opaque, so the light won't get through.
Right.
The horizontal slats.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. And so my understanding is that, um, it would basically look the same on both sides, right? So that's basically what you would see on their, on their property. I, you know, and I guess there's a lot of old adages about fences. If you don't like their fence, you just build your own fence.
You build your own, yeah.
All right, so concern about, um, people walking through and, so I, 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 I mean, you know, I'm, I'm just one member of the board. I think the, the fence certainly blocks the, the headlights.
Yeah.
Which I think would be a, a big concern.
Yes.
Versus, I mean, certainly light coming down, I understand. I mean, you know, according to our planner's analysis, you know, like, like she said, you know, from the, the people that do this work at AKRF, you might see a glow. Just, you know, there's lighting, so you're just gonna see more light. But, I mean, there's no expectation that you, if you don't have shades on your window now, you wouldn't have to buy shades because there'd be a light shining into your window.
Okay.
I think. I mean, that's.
Yeah, it's all downward directed.
Yeah, it's downward directed. Yeah, obviously, right, light scatters, you know, you're, it's gonna hit the building and photons are gonna go in every dire, you know, direction. So you're gonna see a building that you may not see now. Um, but I think the, you know, part of what the planning board needs to do is weigh the, you know, uh, the, the safety of the people trying to go to this restaurant, not in the dark outweighs you maybe seeing a building you don't see right now at night.
Right, no, I, I mean, I was concerned about, I mean, I was more concerned about the scenario of a light shining into our.
Right.
Directly into our property.
And I think, um, if I remember correctly, I think it's actually like where the septic is, it's actually like a slight hill up and then there's a six-foot.
Yeah, it is a little.
Fence, right?
So it's a little bit.
So really, the, the top of the fence might be about seven or eight feet above where the parking would be, that sound?
And it's seven feet away.
And what?
Seventy feet.
Right, right, yeah. I mean, there's a distance there. There's just gonna be a grass area. Yeah, so.
Okay, well, I think that satisfied our questions, yeah. So thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
So like I said, there's no one else signed up for this public hearing. Any members of the public who wish to speak at this public hearing, please come to the podium at Okay, so seeing no one approaching the podium. We always have three options with these public hearings. Uh, keep it open, close it, close it, but.
Keep it open for written comments.
Thoughts?
I say keep it open for written comments.
The door?
That sounds fair.
Member Williams? Close it?
That's fine.
Which is fine, you said two different things.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought.
Close it or keep it open for written comments?
For, for comments.
Okay. Everybody's gotta speak in the microphone. Get the microphone emailed. All right, so what I heard was, uh, keep it open for written comments. Agreed, keep it open for written comments, close it.
Comments.
Comments, okay. So, um, in the light of just receiving this memo from the Department of Health, I mean, obviously our engineer said, you know, seemed perfectly fine to him, but let's just make sure we get on the website, people can see, you know, what it's, you know, what it actually says, everything, you know, then full transparency of what it says. Uh, I'll make a motion that we, uh, close this public hearing, leave it open for written comments to, um.
Seven days?
Yeah, Monday the 10th at noon.
Yep.
Yeah. Motion made by myself, seconded by member Palmer. Discussion, okay, seeing no discussion, all is in favor of closing the public hearing, leave it open for written comments to February 10th at noon. Uh, comments would go to the planning secretary. Will they say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no? Okay. Uh, motion passes for one with two absences. Okay. Uh, public hearing is closed. We'll be looking to receive written comments over the next week. Um, so if you do have anything further, you're certainly welcome to, um, you know, submit that, uh, you or anyone, anyone else.
Memo?
Oh, yeah, can we get the memo back?
Thank you.
And could, uh, if you could, please come back to the podium, Mr. Fernandez. Could you just, just so we have a very clean copy, can you email that to the secretary?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, that way, that way we can, just clean it and put that PDF up, then you scanning it in and then.
I'll scan it and smart.
Okay, whatever, whichever.
We'll send in the.
Just send it anyway this way, I have it. It's electronic. I, again, I don't know why the Department of Health would just send it to us all sorts of things. They don't have to do what we say.
They don't have to.
All right. So, um, uh, so at this point, we, um, have, uh.
We have part two of the EAF, if the board wants to go through that. We have a negative Um, so yeah, let's start with part two, though, of the EAF, that form.
Uh, okay, so, let me see.
There it is.
I'm still looking for a Word document.
So there are, um, some draft answers in there, but this is the board's document, so, you know, feel free to fill in how you want to fill in.
Okay. And just for anyone who's not familiar with this process, it's full environmental assessment form. There is these impacts on all these different things. And, uh, if there's no impact, we move on. If there, we believe there may be an impact, then we make a determination, is it no or small impact that may occur, or moderate to large impact that may occur. Um, and then based on those answers, that would, um, have a potentially effect with regard to State Environmental Quality Review Act. So number one, impact on land. A proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the pro site, yes. Uh, but then, uh, all those impacts would be, uh, small or, or nonexistent, if you read through the list there. Impact on geological features, no. So we move on to the next one. Impacts on surface water, no. Number four, impacts on groundwater, um, yes. But then all the impacts will be, um, small or nonexistent.
And most of those, um, are related to stormwater.
Stormwater.
Parking lot.
Right, because the, it's a, a community well, not, uh, they're not drawing up from a, their own well on the property. Uh, impact on flooding, no. Number six, impacts on air, no. Number seven, uh, impact on plants and animals, no. Uh, impact on agricultural resources, no. Impact on aesthetic resources, no. Uh, impact on historical and archaeological resources, no. Impact on open space and recreation, no. Impact on critical environmental areas, no. Uh, impact on transportation, yes. But all those impacts would be, uh, small or, uh, nonexistent, may occur. Uh, impact on energy, yes. Uh, but again, uh, smaller, no impacts may occur. Uh, impact on noise, odor, and light, uh, again, yes. Um, but again, uh, that those impacts would be, uh, small or nonexistent. Impact on human health, no. I guess if someone ate too much at the restaurant. Consistent with, uh, community plans. The proposed action is, so just to be clear, because it's always gonna throw people. Consistently with community plans, the proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans.
Double negative.
So it's no, yeah, that's what always.
It's the opposite of what you think it should be.
Right. So.
Yeah.
It's a double negative, meaning yes, it is consistent with community plans, but the way they have it written out, you have to put no. And then consistent with community character, again, the.
The proposed change.
Uh, project is inconsistent with the existing community character, no.
It's a double.
So. Yeah, I guess it, it could throw you off. You'd be like, wait a minute.
Must be an engineer wrote that.
It's a little confusing.
Okay. Um, all right, so any members of the planning board have any comments, questions, concerns about any of the, uh, 18 impacts, the answers that are there? Anybody think that in fact a smaller non-impact may, may be a moderate or large impact? No? Our consultants have anything to add at this point?
Uh, no, just if the board's ready, we have a resolution to adopt a determination of significance.
Okay. And again, we still have the written comments open for the public hearings. We're not making a final decision. This is just about, did you just explain, please?
The secret impacts have to do with, um, community-wide environmental impacts. So, for instance, one of the questions on there was creating a parking lot for 500 or more cars. You know, that's gonna have a bigger impact on the cars coming in and out of the state highway. This is 25 cars, so it falls well below that, that environmental threshold. So your determination tonight would mean that it's not going to have a significant adverse community-wide impact. And then when it comes time to approve or not approve the project itself, that's based on standards in your zoning law and the individual site plan.
Okay.
So still time to accept comments on.
Right.
Layout and how it affects the neighbors.
All right, so, um, this is a resolution to adopt a determination of significance, negative declaration, uh, for 3186 Route 22 LLC. Uh, so again, the, the process then after this would be that we would accept written comments for the next week, and then at a future meeting, uh, presuming everything goes according to, uh, the way Mr. Fernandez and his clients would like, we would, uh, adopt the resolution, uh, on the project. But again, someone might submit something in writing that we didn't think of and we have to look at it again, so. So resolution to adopt a determination of significance, negative declaration, 3186 Route 22 LC. Uh, whereas the applicant, 3186 Route 22 LC has submitted an application for site plan approval, architectural review board approval, and erosion sediment control permit approval to convert an existing 3,455 square foot commercial building into a restaurant, build a new parking lot with 25 parking spaces, and add associated landscaping, lighting, and stormwater infrastructure on a 0.9 acre property known as the project located, uh, at 3186 Route 22 Dover Plains, New York, and known as tax parcel number 132600-7063-10-491576 in the HM zoning district and the Dover principal aquifer overlay district, collectively known as the project site. And whereas a restaurant is permitted, is a permitted use in the HM zoning district, subject to site plan approval, and whereas the project is shown on a site plan entitled Site Plan Approval 3186 State Route 22, town of Dover Plains, Dutchess County, New York, 12522, by Joseph Fernandez Architect PC, last revised January 14, 2025, collectively known as the site plan. And whereas the applicant has submitted a full environmental assessment form, or FEAF, Part One dated October 10, 2024, and last revised December 18, 2024 pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act or SECR, and whereas pursuant to 6 NYCRR, um, section 61, uh, 7.4 and 617.5, an action that does not appear on the type one or type, and type two lists is unlisted. And whereas on October 27, 2024, the planning board classified the project as an enlisted action authorized circulation of the action for designation of lead agency. And whereas on December 23, 2024, the planning board circulated notice of its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated view of the project to which no other agency objected. And whereas the planning board has considered the criteria contained in 61, 6 NYCRR, section 617.7, Parts Two and Three of the EAF, and thoroughly analyzed all part, all identified relevant areas of environmental concern as set forth in the narrative accompanying Part Three of the EAF. Now therefore be it resolved that, for the reasons set forth in Parts Two and Three of the EAF, which are incorporated herein, the planning board hereby issues a negative declaration determining that the project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts and that a draft environmental impact statement, uh, will not be prepared. Be it further resolved that the secretary of the planning board is hereby directed to file a copy of this resolution with the town clerk, all interested involved agencies, and any person who has requested a copy, and to make other filings required by law. Uh, this resolution is being offered by.
So moved.
Member Palmer, seconded by.
Second.
Member Alano.
Discussion.
Um, I will say that AKRF did prepare language for part three, which just reiterates the findings in part two.
Right.
That there won't be an impact, so.
All right, um. Mr. Fernandez, you have a.
The interested involved, uh, we have the donor zoning board of appeals, do they have to be notified?
You know, we can take them off.
Thank you.
They.
Because they never went to them.
It, it didn't go and I had added them because I thought they might need a variance.
Right.
But now, uh, they don't.
I'll just wipe it off.
Do you have DEC on that list? It's, we're going for Speedies now?
We did not circulate to DEC. Uh, we can send them a copy of this, though.
This because they're going, they're gonna need that in order for them to issue the, uh, Speedies.
Okay.
Save your notice.
Well, we didn't circulate to them, but we can send them a copy of this.
All they need is proof of neg deck, that's all they care about.
Okay. Alright, anything further regarding this resolution?
Nope.
Alright, so, once we vote on this resolution, that'll be it for tonight, for this, and then we would see you at our next meeting, which would be the beginning of March.
March.
Thank you. And I guess I'll just say one thing, just for yourself, so fences make good neighbors, but I think maybe corner-to-corner fences make great neighbors, so.
Okay.
But we're not saying that you need to change anything.
Okay.
Alright. So, uh, any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of resolution to adopt a determination of significance, negative declaration, 3186 Route 22 LLC, Secretary, please call a roll.
Uh, Member Williams?
Aye.
Member Valano?
Aye.
Member Sador?
Aye.
Member Palmer?
Aye.
Chairman Corteen?
Aye.
Okay, this resolution is adopted 5-0 with two absences. We will see you.
Next month.
Four weeks? Four weeks, right, four weeks, February.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And again, any members of the public, you have slightly less than a week, this is made up kind of in writing. Okay. And I honestly don't know what I...
The plan is on the website, if anyone wants to see it.
Yeah, the plan's on the website. I don't know what I honestly could have done here, but I can't, like, control anything.
Give us control of the laptop.
Just like, it's, I can move the cursor around and that's it, it doesn't actually do anything. Did anything? Thank you, guys. Added one word. Hello back.
What did you add?
Uh, it was like an of or at, it was a preposition of. Oh, at, located at three ways.
You work on that, we'll, uh, remind?
Oh, I know what happened, you probably disconnected.
I mean, you disconnected, I didn't.
I didn't.
Anyway, whole business, Stony Brook Estates. Hello?
How are you guys doing? Ryan Stokosa, Dan Stokosa Engineering, I know it's been a while since we've been in front of you guys, but obviously, the Stony Brook project, located on Rome Route 22, had some previous approvals, I mean, even working with, the, the main delay has been with DOT. Took us a while to have a sit-down meeting with them, and we had a pretty productive meeting toward the end of last year, and just going over some improvements that are gonna be made to the, to the entrance, specific to the sidewalk, crosswalk, drop curb, ADA requirements, things like that.
Okay.
We anticipate making a submission to you guys with those plan updates and the, the results of that meeting for the March meeting, so we'll be spending some time next week for the deadline, I think it's Wednesday or Thursday?
Uh, yes, the deadline is, uh, Wednesday the 12th, so not this Wednesday, but next Wednesday.
Right, so that...
And then after that, it'll be the 26th.
Yeah, that plan set will be inclusive of, of those conversations and updated details. The other thing, too, as Joe mentioned earlier in the meeting, DEC updated their stormwater regs with some, with new construction activity permit information, so we're also working to address that as part of the plan update, so we'll be current with the codes of today for, for board review and consultation by the planner, but again...
Do you have a current NOI?
I don't, I don't think we do.
Oh, so you have to meet the new standards.
The new standards, yeah. Yeah, it was a...
For those of us who aren't engineers, that means what?
EPA, along with the DEC, issued new standards for stormwater, starting March, uh, February 1st, excuse me, February 1st.
Starting two days ago.
Yeah, so now, and in effect canceled all old NOI or old permits. So right now, all old permits are basically canceled with a 30-day grace period to get coverage under the new program.
Huh.
Any, any plans that were not issued prior to January 31st, even if they were under review, have been stopped and have to meet current standards, which includes a pretty substantial new list of things we have to do on top of the old permit.
And you guys didn't have enough to do as it was, right?
Yeah, they had a pretty hardy stormwater program, so they're probably gonna have no problem, it's just a procedural.
Okay.
It's a lot more procedure to it.
Right.
But it hadn't been covered under the ENOI from before, it's still been current, the renewal would have been just a single form, re-registering a payment, you know, and that's about it.
Okay.
Not even a fee, they weren't even collecting a fee.
Gotcha. And us, the town of Dover not being an MS4 community, doesn't have any bearing on this?
No.
Okay.
Other than for our own town of Dover properties.
Just for our...
We have no administrative role in this whatsoever.
Right. Alright, um, any members of the planning board have any comments, questions? Okay. So, you're anticipating that you will have a submission to our planning office by honor before Wednes, Wednesday at noon next week?
Right.
Okay. And that we would see you then March 3rd?
You will see me March 3rd.
Okay. And just so, I guess, I think, so everyone's clear, so the Stony Brook Estates project currently has no approvals?
It had.
They've all lapsed.
They lapsed, they, and we're here, we weren't the original design engineers, so we, we're basically helping the applicant who purchased the piece, and just try to bring everything up to code, so it'll be some, some plan changes with details and documentation on the SWIP is relatively, relatively...
Right, your health department approval collapsed?
Um, I believe, I believe we're gonna be revisiting the health department approval, there's, there's a, specific to health department things, there's, we, we have a redesign of how we're gonna collect the sewer, because I believe the original design had the sewer in the back.
Yes, it did, way up in the hill.
Right, so we're gonna, we're gonna make some tweaks to that, too.
It was going to, it was gonna run north to, north of the, the, the trailway, and then, then come south to...
Right, so our, it's, it's a more efficient design, less disturbance, in specific, just to collection along the units themselves, we're gonna, they, they had a sewer line running in back of the, of the proposed structures, we're gonna move that sewer collection to the front, so it's just from a main, a maintenance standpoint, it's easier to access, you're not disturbing.
Was there also like a pump right in front of the buildings or something?
It was, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll, you'll, those, those modifications will be on that submission.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, what really prompted, like, if you were paying attention to the beginning, we, you know, where I reviewed the minutes, it was really, we're just reviewing a bunch of different projects, and frankly, we're like, we just haven't heard from them in nearly two years, so it's just kinda like, what's going on? So that's why, that's really, I think, what prompted the letter, saying, what's going on?
Understandable, I mean, the DOT was, was extremely hard to finally have a sit-down meeting, and once we had that meeting, it was productive and we covered a lot of things, so.
That's good.
Alright.
Okay, well, well then, provided you submit in a timely manner, we'll see you in four weeks.
See you in four weeks, guys.
How many units are involved in that project?
I think we had, what, seven buildings with four units each?
Twenty-eight, was it?
Twenty-eight units. Yeah, I think that's what we had.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next scheduled meetings are March 3rd with a deadline of February 12th, as we just discussed, and then March 17th with a deadline of February 26th. At our March 3rd meeting, we will very likely have 3186 Route 22 restaurants for final approval, and in all likelihood, Stony Brook Estates, have we received anything? No?
Just an email from Insight requesting an amended site.
For?
I have, I think it's for Harlem Valley.
HVH?
Yep.
Alright, yeah, they, right, Insight was, they were working on HVH, sure.
So that'll be possibly on that one also.
Alright, and then the, the zoning update committee did meet in January?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Hoping to have a planned community, I forget the whole title again, for the February meeting.
Of the zoning update committee, that you would then send a recommendation to the town board.
To the town board.
Their February or March meeting?
Well, we're gonna discuss it in February, whether we're going to approve it as what we see right then and there and send it, or wait till March and send it.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I did contact the planning board secretary in Pauling. I left her a message today, she did not get back to me yet, but I told her that we could just schedule the meeting for next Monday at 6 o'clock.
Yeah.
And whoever comes, comes, so that would be up to any two members of this board, if they were, would like to attend.
So, I get this, all of this is just for the public and everyone, this is regarding Starkdale Farms, which is still presently proposed in both Dover and Pauling, and so, yeah, like, you know, I've been looking forward to meeting with them again, I thought you and I, when we met with the Pauling Planning Board folks in November, I believe, it was productive.
It was.
Yeah.
It was either October or November, yeah.
Yeah, and they, you know, it'd be good for them to give us an update of what's going on in their town, with regard to that planning. Okay. Um, for the business before the planning board?
That meeting would be here.
Uh, that's, right, yeah, 'cause the last, that's why, and that's...
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Oh, yeah, no, that's what we discussed, was that, just for fairness, we just switch the location every time we meet, so.
Yeah.
It was, the first meeting was down there, so the second meeting would be here, the third meeting would, if there is a third meeting, would be back down Pauling.
But please, if you are going to attend, you need to let me know, because I have to make sure we don't have a quorum.
Yeah, 'cause just remember, I'll be there, and it could be two other members can be there.
Awesome, you bet.
Yeah.
Yeah, just so we don't have a quorum.
Well, how would that work with the current state laws? If I'm there and two members are there presently, if someone's there on a Zoom call, does that then make a quorum?
So, no, it's not a quorum, but I think it starts becoming an illegal meeting at that point.
Yeah, 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 right, right, right.
Because it feels like...
So, yeah, please do let Secretary Emile know if you'd like to attend, and then it might just come down to, I don't know, first two people, or who really wants to do it?
Yep.
And if you're really, if you're really concerned, we could have a, up for another meeting.
Notice it, or we can just notice it.
Well, that's true, but it's a week from now, so.
Yeah, it's next Monday. It's okay, there's enough time.
Okay, well, please get your in.
Yeah, if I show and there's too many people, I'll go home.
Okay.
Not, not an issue.
Okay.
For us applicants.
That sounds good. I hope you can attend. Alright.